Okay, the meeting is called to order at 6:02. We have no public, so no public expression. Could I have a motion to approve the June 21, 23 regular meeting minutes?
I want a motion.
Okay.
All in favor of that?
Yes. I'm kidding. All in favor. Against, motion's passed. Okay, friends report, they're on hiatus.
They meet again in September.
Okay, so we'll put them back to that. Okay, onto Elliot for the Treasury's report.
Okay, thank you. I'm starting here on page six. We're at the six way, six month halfway point. I'd say we're in very good shape. I start with such a positive note because if you read the first line of my report, I'm showing that our current balance of cash and invested funds, which is $5,393,202, is actually significantly less than it was a year ago for the first time in my tenure. It's not my fault, it's not Kelly's fault, it's nobody's fault. It has to do with the way the payments flow from the district. Money we would expect it to get in June, and which was maybe even issued in June, couldn't be deposited until after the Fourth of July holiday. So we'll see it next month. We will be back to a more normal position for this time of year. Actually, usually, I think, Bill, this is our prattest point in the year, isn't it, June?
Uh, yes, it should be.
Yeah, yeah, so now it's going to be July this year, I guess.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So, we are getting the all, Kelly tells me that in fact, the entire balance of the money coming from the district is now in the bank. And so you'll see that in the July report. And that'll basically take care of us for the rest of the fiscal year. You'll notice here in part one, I am beginning to show now this alternative way of looking at cash position in terms of a 12-month rolling average. A couple of you have asked for this, so here it is. And there again, we are, we are less than the rolling average, 12-month average rolling because of this total worth of money. There's about a million dollars that difference between what we would have expected to do in the year and what we did.
I'm a little surprised, though, it's down that much, 300 grand from this time last year, just because of the million dollars would not make it go down that much.
I think 250, because it's 300.
Well, you know, I can take a, I can take a deeper dig into issues there, I don't know.
Okay.
Let's see what, let's see how things sit in July. And then also, of course, I have a brand-new computer program that I set up to do these averages. So I'll have to make sure that that's correct. You know, I got, you know, if there's something most suspicious about, I will check that out. Okay, so as far as the month going on to part two, revenue and expense for the month, we spent 311, 372. The expenses are all very normal to me. The, the number's relatively high because you have prepay rolls, as you'll see. And also, big, bigger-than-usual health payments, health insurance payments, which were, I believe, somewhere around 35,000. Oh, here it is. No, yeah, I think it was around 35, right?
Uh, health insurance?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, somewhere around there.
Including the, all the different various pieces there.
Yeah.
There are disability pieces and pregnancy lead pieces, there's all kinds of pieces that add in there. Okay. The BNG expenses, this for the month of June, were not, not too bad based on the way it's been lately. Not too bad, including utilities were at 35,000. So, now, in terms of income for June, we did have some income from the district, but not a great deal. And most, uh, we did also have $10,000 in contributions, nearly 10, more than 10,000 in contributions and nearly 20,000 in financial income for the month of June, which is mainly from the T-bills. So that's, that's pretty good, too. Now, since we're at the halfway point, we definitely want to look closely at revenue and expenses as opposed as the way the annual budget and the year-to-date actuals, how they line up. And in a way, I started with the two, the two major points on income. Contributed income is running at 36.5, you know, significantly below half of our budgeted total for the year. And so we'd have to see historically, Bill, does that make sense? Do we tend to get our?
I think that's down because of the Wagner team contributions from Kathy left.
Yeah.
They were, they were pretty high, we didn't have that this year.
Yeah, but I just meant in terms of the calendar year, do we typically get?
Just so you know, I budgeted more for contributions this year than I had, had been previously budgeted for. Because we're going to do an annual appeal this year, which will go out like October-ish. You know, we want to hit that sweet spot before, you know, when, when people start wanting to give their money away at the end of the year. Before Thanksgiving, yeah.
Yeah.
But, you know, we have to be after the budget vote, so it doesn't look like we're asking you for a bunch of money and then putting our hand in. So we find the sweet spot.
That timing is great on that, and obviously that, that's going to help solve the problem. Yeah, and I think it's fine to make it a little bit more ambitious. Of course, the financial income, we're practically at 100% already. And because this is money that's contracted in a sense, I mean, we have T-bills that are fixed rates, et cetera. So we know we're going to go well over this budget number. Nothing wrong with that, that's a good thing. And as you'll notice in the budget for next year, you know, Kelly is again keeping the, the projection in line with what we did this year. So we probably will be able to squirrel away a little bit more money next year.
And we might have to use one of the.
That's true.
T-bills.
It'll help, yeah. It'll help once those, I see expenses start coming in.
Yeah, I mean, excuse me, one second, that kind of skews the analysis, though, because we're adding components that we didn't have, that we didn't use before, like in particular like the T-bill. You know, so we're trying to compare this, as you said, either a year or on an expanded basis, whether it's three years or five years, right? We're not really comparing apples to apples on assets, you know, so.
But this has nothing to do with the a year-to-year comparison.
No, I understand.
Here I'm just looking at six months versus the annual budget.
We are comparing the annual budget that was made last year with the actuality of this year, but we can't avoid that.
Well, no, I understand that, but I just want, I think it's just a point that we should hold in mind that there are certain components. Now, it's the same thing with expenses. One year you may have extra expenses that you didn't have, you know, from the previous year. It's not a static or a constant type of function to deal with, so.
Yeah.
Or they can budget as best guess, and some areas you get problems as a result.
Right, and, and there's nothing wrong with that.
Yeah.
So I don't, I don't know that it's really good to do a comparative analysis on some, some of these things.
Well, you know, with all of these things, when you take some factor and try to apply it, you know, it's just a number, and it's a question, you know, you interpret it, and you can draw the lines different ways. But those are the two primary, and I think only, the only important things to look at in terms of income. The rest of these are expense figures. So I'd like, you know, everybody to take a look at those and see if you are uncomfortable with any of those. I mean, many of them, of course, are, are, are below the 50% threshold, which simply is, it's very good, obviously. Administrative expense is coming in well under the 50%, personnel is just under, and we know that that's relatively fixed. What else came in close? Well.
What's the difference between capital expenditure and, or what was the capital expenditure this year? Was that looking at HVAC?
Let's take a look, we have to go to the detail on that.
That would, that would be my guess, is what came out of capital were things related to the, the HVAC. So some of the consultant work by, engineering work by grocer, possibly the deposit for the floors.
Okay, because that would, because the engineering work would be.
Yeah.
Well, I want to make sure it's, because it could also be repair.
Yeah, no, we made sure, like, that's, that's always the interesting thing, right? So we have a lot of HVAC stuff that is repair, because we're repairing old equipment. But we also have stuff that is going to that capital line for the, the HVAC remediation. So, you know, like wells, when we have the wells cleaned, that was this year, right? Was that this year? Was it last year? They all blur. I think it was this year, or last year.
I mean, I just, I took the number, you know, from the total 8,000 expenses. But, yeah, no, no, 8,500.
Yeah.
8,500 capital expenditure line, which, you know, was budgeted at 120,000. And then, and we are now over budget to the tune of almost $40,000. But of course, we're going to be doing transfers to sort this all out anyway.
Yeah. So yeah, that 80,495 is, is primarily the things we've done with the HVAC.
But does that also, don't you know, taking into account that we've front-loaded some of those expenses? That some of those, we may not have that in the second half of the year?
Yeah. I mean, the reality of the situation is we probably won't have too many more huge expenses for the HVAC, but we will have the expenses for the shelving, the flooring, all of those things.
And actually, if you go to buildings in Brown, repair and maintenance is 27, and HVAC, and then if you go back to 14, part of Apple's HVAC remediation. So I think most of the HVAC bills and we have these capital expenditures, which is fine.
Yeah.
It's just.
When it's, I will say, the HVAC stuff ends up in capital expenditures when it's directly related to that, but when they're fixing other stuff, some of it comes out of.
The well, the cleaning of the well.
The cleaning of the wells. So like that $80,000, I can run that report for you, because I don't want to necessarily give you incorrect information. I can run the report of what that $62,785 is. My guess is that's PW Grocer, and it's the wells. And then I think we had one HVAC-related thing that might be in there. But like, when they come, because our compressor died, right? That's related to the equipment that's in the building now, so that I pull out of repairs.
I mean, it may not be possible to keep those two separate because of so.
Yeah. Yeah.
And I honestly, this is one that we have to spend, so I don't know.
You don't really care.
So, I mean, Elliot, I mean, we know that we're going to take a hit.
Yeah.
We're expecting a big one.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, things are going to dramatically change over the next like six to 12 months, right? You know, and obviously, we're going to reach a point, 12 to 18 months from now, where we don't have nearly the amount of money and cash that we have now. Because we're going to be, you know, spending a lot of it. But for the time being, we track it and just so we'll have something to judge it against. I mean, I didn't, I didn't mention this about, but, you know, in my introduction to this subject here, I'm saying that, you know, for the first six months, our revenue was 64% of the budget, which is great, and our expenses were below half budget. So I mean, right, big picture, certainly very solid. Now, again, you know, based on a lot of the unanticipated things, some of which we front-loaded, to use your word, others in which we didn't, you know, then I'm not sure exactly where it's going to be at the end of the year. But I think it's becoming truly pretty clear that the budget lines we're going to go over on are BNG, you know, plant-related costs. And the, and I think every other area seems to be very much under control. So I think that's great.
Was there anything that surprised you?
Um, no.
You asked us the question, I mean.
No, I, no, I, I could say, I, I, I wanted to open up that way because I did not see, I did not see any concern in the numbers I presented to you. I simply don't want to assume that you didn't. I want to give you the opportunity to see how you feel about it. I mean, that's, that was where I was coming from.
Okay, any questions? Thanks, Elliot. Are you done with your report?
Yeah, yeah, well, I mean, we need to now vote on the.
We need a motion to approve the Treasury reports and the check warrants and the payroll warrants.
Will make that motion?
I'll second it.
All in favor? Post. Good job, Elliot.
Thank you all.
I enjoy the analysis.
Well, why do I show you my rolling average chart?
That's a stream back.
You gotta show my old one, chicken scratch, when you see your nice Excel one.
On sheets, on Google.
Google Sheets.
Really?
Yes. Check your. And all I have to do now, I've entered there all the numbers that you gave me on the yellow sheet. Now all I have to do is just go like this, down 12 things, and it tells me rolling average, high, low.
Okay, Kelly, with the directory.
All right, so as, as you all know, some library directors run libraries, and some library directors just do HVAC. I, it's like, you know, it's my legacy in library land, I think, is, is geothermal HVACs. But right now, the thing is MacGyvered. We had Anne Ron out again today for an unrelated issue. But Anne Ron is hoping that the compressor will be in by the end of the week, and then we can have the compressor replaced. And then we can un-MacGyver the units. But we're still waiting for the tech from Climate Master to figure out why the sensors are not doing what the sensors are supposed to be doing. So ACS is like, it's not our sensor, it's the mechanical sensor. We can't make the mechanical sensor work. And Anne Ron's like, well, we are puzzled as well. So Anne Ron has reached out to Climate Master, because I guess Climate Master has, you know, I'm going to call him a guru, who, who knows these things. And hopefully, that person will be able to come out here. Or Lizardus will just move very quickly, will get through the permitting process, and then we don't have to worry about any of this, because we'll have a shiny new system. Um, what else? We had some plumbing issues, which, which have been, been fixed. Our toilets diaphragm failed, which no less than nine jokes came, come to my head at any point in time when, when I was told that. But, you know, um, there. The what? The water broke, yes, I was like, um, yeah.
That's going to happen.
It's just so wise. I just can't, I don't know why, I think that's so funny. But it has been replaced, it is fully functioning. We, we don't have to worry about the, the health and safety of our toilet. And now we have them coming back tomorrow because there is some sort of not HVAC-related leak in the mechanical room. And one of the drains in the floor has standing water in it, so there's some sort of clog. So we're, we're, we're hoping it's a, a pipe that's leaking or backed up, because the other choice is water is coming in from outside, which is bad, right?
What contract can you use for that?
For our plumber, we use Rob S.A. Plumbing. He also does e-stem backflow, so, and they do our backflow testing.
Is that, is that testing connected in any way to the heat drain?
We don't know, we don't know if it's coming in from outside or if the issue is a clogged pipe that's leaking. So they're coming to either give me bad news or worse news. We'll see. Well, we're, we're monitoring that, that's, that's a new, that's new today. So we're working on it. Um, we had, I don't know, we need to sage the place again. We had an infestation of flying ants in the scholar study, where we have some water damage in the window that needs to be addressed. So that's, that's on my list. We are sticking acoustic sound panels in the, the workroom. We're almost done, it looks very nice. They do look nice, and we've been using that for podcasting. We're going to have a library podcast. Eileen is working on that. And let's see, you all have your summer tour passports, so you can go visit other libraries.
Did you share our contact?
I did.
So is our library haunted?
It is haunted. Our library, here's the thing. It's also flooded. It's also flooded, we had an infestation of flies. Yeah. And our toilet might be pregnant, we're not quite sure. So, so yeah, there's that. Time clock, we have implemented, it's, it's working just fine. Time bank removed Wanda from the, the account. And the, the, the big bummer of news is that the Aurora shelving, which is all the shelving on the lower level, the steel shelving, which was the first thing they ordered, because that had the longest lead time. They called them and they were like, yeah, we know that, we told you, you know, 12 weeks or whatever it was, but it's actually not going to ship until at least September 9th. So because we can't have a trust, a trustee forum and a budget hearing in the middle of a construction site, and, yeah, we don't have shelves. We're going to push the renovation to the day of the, till after the budget vote, which is the 28th. And they already have us on the schedule for demolition of the, the shelving and the packing away of books for Friday, the 29th. So that is when that project will kick off. I have told the staff not to book programming for the first three weeks in October, just in case. And we'll just get it done as, as quickly as possible. And I think that that is, that isn't it?
Are you getting Lizardo?
Yes.
Or are we going to talk about that later?
Uh, we can talk about that later. Um, yes, under HVAC stuff. Sure. No, not really. Seamless. You know, a couple of the staff members, you know, they don't always say these things to me. They like, say them to Wanda, and then Wanda's like, um, we're just sort of like, you know, we haven't had a time clock for like 20 years, like, what's, what's the deal? And I was like, the auditor wants a time clock, so we're putting in a time clock. Which, you know, is fine. Had to happen eventually.
With a computer program or something?
It's, um, so weird, it does. So it works with our current platform, which is ADP run payroll. And so people just use their little fingerprint and check in, check out. If they forget to clock in or clock out, or, you know, get stuck in traffic and they're late, they fill out a little form that says, I was late today because, so we have that, so we can, you know, manually do whatever it is that we need to do. And it's, it's working out.
Good.
Yeah. It's doing, yeah, it's doing exactly what we want it to do. And it makes payroll a little bit easier, because we're not chasing people down to fill out time sheets, which is nice. Right? Um, yeah, so that's, that's that. In terms of statistics, I did want to mention, I did not have the number of visitors, because the two people who can get me that number are both on vacation. So we'll have that updated for the next board meeting. My guess is it's a lot, because we've been busy. Yeah. Yeah. New library card holders, Wes, hi. You know, they, um, the library might be falling apart, but we have lots of people. And then the other thing was, I could not get to the Tic Tac board, statistics analysis board. It just kept rainbow wheeling, you know, spinning, spinning, so I gave up. And you will notice that because we're not doing these huge data transfers, moving things from the server and whatever the case may be, that our data transfer information has gone way down. It's still up. It is, but it's not like in terabytes anymore. We're back, we're back to gigabytes.
Fire numbers of the library, if our attendance is higher.
Yeah. And then personnel report, you see the personnel report. I included for you Jill's resignation letter. She was our substitute librarian, we haven't needed her in a while, because we've been fully staffed. Rita reduced her hours, that was her choice. She had been, she had not been full-time that long, if that makes sense. And so she just has, has better things to do than be here. So she went back to part-time, and then, of course, we had Nancy, who is taking on the role as our confidential administrative assistant.
We still get the benefits, so.
Yes, she does, yeah.
I know she works at the stand.
Yeah.
Maybe she's just temporary.
Yeah, so.
And Nancy embraced the opportunity.
She did. I mean, she's still, you know, she's, she's like, I still need to be on the floor a little. She needs to be among her people, you know. Nancy, Nancy is a employee of the people, so she does still pop in at the circ desk. She is back at work, she started back, um, like right after 4th of July? Right before 4th of July? Oh, no. No.
Okay, can we have a motion to approve the personnel report? All four, all right, I oppose. Motion passes. Okay, onto committee reports, I know this is going to be quick, because I don't have much on my notes here. Personnel.
We did not meet, and I'm very proud of that.
Okay, and again, if you plan to meet, just say it when your time comes up. Frances Elliot, we did not meet this month. Building and grounds, Dan.
We did not meet, though, I did sit in our Lizardo kickoff meeting, which we'll get into HVAC update.
Policy and long-range planning.
Did not meet.
Outreach, Michael. No. What am I talking about? Nash Park, of course you can. Take it away, Diane.
Okay, so these are up and running, playgrounds path, tennis courts path, pickleball, equipment floor, grass is brown. Some irrigation heads are being fixed, the usual summertime maintenance. There are various summer park programs ongoing. The lines in the parking lot have been repainted, I don't know if I said that last time. We're going to add two handicap spots to, in addition to a third one. And the 5K race is scheduled for Sundays, November 10. And I think we agreed that we could, like, community band play.
What time does the race start?
9:00 AM. And we do, the park does solicit sponsors in different categories. And a lot of the past sponsors have been local businesses, like Over's, John Oats' Pool, baby bits, just a whole bunch. So if anybody is interested in sponsorship or knows somebody who can park and approach, let me know, and I'll give you the information on that. And that's all the party.
Would it be interesting, because doesn't the race come past here? Or is that the manor watering station or something along those lines?
We could certainly.
We have the big water and everything else.
What about a book cart at the other?
Just like, throw books at people.
Catch, catch.
That's 5K. It was a marathon.
It was a 5K.
And it's toward, you know, meeting stations.
What, what time is the 5K?
9:00.
9:00, all right. Maybe we can just get here early and stand on the steps and cheer.
John Tremaine supports you.
Why not, right?
Okay, one for the books, I just want to use on that until next spring.
Yes. Yes.
And and how scholarship, you didn't need?
You didn't need. Um, so we have um an application in place, and I submitted to um bulk for, I didn't look it over, but it's great, because it's accessible to anybody who meets the criteria of being a cardholder, whether you're a graduate, senior, or somebody in the community who's looking um, to gain additional training or whatever. I think that's great. It's called the
Pathway to Success.
Any age?
Any age, or at least high school graduation, like senior or community member, adult.
Yeah, you know, maybe somebody who took a gap year or two or five.
Someone who wants weight training with.
Yeah, so it includes training.
That's why it's broad, it's really nice.
We'll have it for board approval next month, after the lawyer and the auditor.
Al Costa emailed me back, and he says it's great, and he loves it, and um Tom Fels is on vacation, so when he gets back from vacation.
The library is modeling off it, too. It's just really nice.
Good job. Okay, old business.
Alright, so the HVAC, uh, we met with Lizardos. We talked about a timeline. Do you want to? Because I apparently let all of the information of the meeting leave my brain.
Um, well, they they were, they were, they were discussing what they were gonna do. They were there to take more accurate measurements that day. And they were going to get back to us with their proposal of the plan and have a much more in-depth um, proposal for what they had. And that's where we left it.
Yes, as they had mentioned.
I thought they were supposed to have something by now, but I think they're supposed to have something by the September meeting.
Yeah, because I think that they may have to have the acoustical engineer come out. And the structural engineer come out as well, just to confirm that where they wanna put it on the roof, um, can can hold that weight, or if additional, like, bracing needs to be done.
So I guess in August, we can figure out a time to sort of be back with them again.
Yeah.
Alright, that's that's the.
And then.
I spoke with the permit, um, not expediter, permit. Coordinator, thank you. Um, and she is on board when it is time to be on board. Uh, so she said, once you have your paperwork ready to be submitted, um, to to give her a call, and she'll take care of it.
And the person who was on the town.
Yes.
This is the biggest obstacle is no longer there.
Yes.
That's a big thing.
Yes, um, yeah. Uh, biggest obstacle with regards to things on roofs. Roofs, roofs. Um, and that's that. Uh, flooring and stack replacement, we sort of discussed. Um, demo starts September twenty ninth.
I had decided it was just gonna be smooth.
You know, we we had, we had had a, Brad and I had a really long conversation, and he spoke to his foreman, and we were sort of like, if everything went perfectly and smoothly, we could have squeaked it in. Um, but then, like, when has every, anything ever gone perfectly and smoothly? So we just thought, you know, it's.
It's fun.
It's fine, it'll be fine. But I'd like, I've been trying to do this for like a year, you know? That's right. We're moving along.
It's embarrassing to.
Yeah.
September ninth, is it? You're confident of that, or is that?
No, that's the ship date.
Right.
So hopefully, the flooring, the one thing we do have is the flooring. The flooring is in the warehouse. Um, but they can, um, what they can do is, you know, they gotta pull everything out, they gotta box up, they gotta demolish, um, then the flooring comes in, they do the flooring. Um, and then the the other stuff should be, everything should be in by August, with the exception of the Aurora shelving, so they can start on these, you know, they'll start on the other floors first. And then the last thing that'll go in is is the steel shelving.
A lot of coordination.
Yeah.
I know you're preoccupied with, you know, the installation, but is there any contingency planning, assuming that it doesn't go as planned and it takes.
A little longer. Um, I think what's gonna end up happening is we, so because we're doing work on all three floors, and we're using the top two floors for storage for this lower level, right? Um, what we're waiting on is the steel shelving. Everything can be done, except for the steel shelving. So worst-case scenario, if the steel shelving continues to be delayed, um, we can sort of operate with the children's materials on a different floor. We can put it on carts. We can have a smaller collection down here and keep some stuff in storage and pull it. There's a variety of options we can go with. The shelves downstairs are steel. They're very pretty, sparkly white, are all wood. So we did the wood to match the wood shelves, um, that are custom. And then we did the steel shelves down here, because with wood and panels, laminate wood and panels, and that's so that it just fits the space, because it's a little more industrial down here than having those those classic wood shelves. They are sparkly white. They're white with a little sparkle, a little pizzazz. They're they're not rat gray, mouse gray. No mouse gray. Um, mouse gray and spoke pattern and uh, neither of those things. And mustard yellow floors. So there's a little, um, if if we can move on to the budget, um, we have the resolution on there, um, for the budget. The tax cap forum has been completed since we have our money from the school. I officially know how much we're bringing in for pilots, so it switches some things up a little bit. Uh, what I'm putting forward is a hundred and forty thousand, three hundred and three dollars. Yes, we need those three dollars for something. Um, which is a six point zero two percent increase, but it does not exceed the cap. We're actually under the cap by six thousand, two hundred dollars. Um, and that is because our tax-based growth factor is once again huge, and we also had carryover from the previous year. So that's where we're at. Um, I think in my little my my budget narrative, um, your taxes will go up twenty dollars and thirty-five cents if your home is assessed at a million dollars. Um, and we're looking at a ten percent increase to both programming and collections, uh, an increase of about thirteen percent in buildings and grounds. Um, the majority is, of course, staffing, because if you remember, uh, we understaffed for the um the staff last year, uh, and it also includes a an up to, you don't have to give everybody four percent, but I have budgeted for up to four percent increases in salaries, um, with larger increases for staff who have completed their uh, ML, which is your Masters in Library and Information Science coursework. Um, Ginta will be graduating from library school at the end of this year. Um, and Chance will be um, through about, I don't, maybe halfway through? Maybe? Little bit, little bit less than halfway through, so we we have some increases there. Um, and that's, that's really the budget. I kept it about as as lean as I could, but also we wanna make sure that we're properly, properly funding, um, you know, our digital books, uh, our Library of Things and our regular books also, but also programming. So we um are well on our way to being woefully over budget for programming. Um, and we have a lot of people coming into the library for programs, so we wanna make sure that we uh, we have that. And I did just wanna mention, um, when we were discussing the financial report, um, we're at like forty-nine percent for employees. And I did wanna mention that when employees are out on paid family leave, the library is not paying them. New York State is paying them, and so like, we budgeted them to be here as a a full-time employee, but for the first six months of the year, a whole, a whole person wasn't being paid, so um, do with that information what you will.
In order to standard the tax cap, a lot of it will need to use its reserves.
Yes.
For the next couple of years.
Yes. So the the plan is, um, we're looking at using a hundred and ninety-five from from the reserves, and then we'll just, in the first year, and then in the next year, it'll be like a hundred and twenty-five, and then it'll be, you know, seventy-five, and then it'll be down to zero, because we can't really plan to use the reserves for payroll, because once we run out of the reserves, we still have to pay people, right? Um, so we are looking at um, that. I'm hoping the other part of that is some of our costs related to buildings and grounds and utilities, once we have the new HVAC system in. My my hope, my guess, um, just based on what had transpired when I was at Bridgehampton, um, is that our electric bill will go down once we um, are off of our um geothermal system, because we will not be running it twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Um, and then, you know, um, well, we'll just see.
One in six years.
Yeah. Yeah.
Hope that's a smooth transition.
That is, that is the other thing, is we'll we'll probably have it paid down in fewer than six years. We were not allowed to leave early? Okay.
Yeah.
Alright. Wow, really?
Yeah.
Huh. That's, well, I mean, it's, there's no point in like trying to re renegotiate like mortgages or.
We tried that, too.
Yeah. Now it's not the time, right? Yeah. Super low. Yeah, because we did, we did that in Bridgehampton, um. The penalties. Yeah. We won't. Um, so, so that's the budget. If anybody has has any questions, um, you know, insurance for building insurance, health insurance, you know, um.
Do you have any guess with the insurance rates?
I don't. I budgeted fifteen for for buildings and grounds and, you know, building insurance, um, and then I budgeted thirteen and a half for health. Last, last year it went up fourteen point six five, but it's not gonna go up that much this year. Yeah. Last year was a surprise, like everybody was like, ooh, really? Um, but. Yeah. Um, yeah.
So we have to vote on the budget tonight?
You have to vote on the budget tonight, for several reasons, um, mostly related to the timeline for public notices, legal notices, and um, our newsletter deadline, because our fall newsletter is also our budget mailer.
When's that going out?
That goes out right before Labor Day.
So I would like to uh, have a motion to accept the the.
Do we need to read this whole thing?
Uh, no, you can say as written.
Oh, as written, okay.
Yeah.
Can we have a motion to uh, hold on the budget as written?
I think. I made the motion.
Okay.
I make a motion.
Alright, then we have a second. Okay. I'll leave with a second, hold in favor. Post.
I do have, I do have one thing to add to new business, unless you still wanna talk about the budget.
No, I have something else to talk about.
In old business, sure, but.
We're supposed to do a board retreat?
September. Yes.
Sorry.
That's okay.
But I was wanting to mess up July.
Okay, we were, we were talking about the fall, September, right? So, um, can everybody bring their calendar to the August board meeting?
You're not gonna use one of those monkey chat.
Oh, Survey Monkey or Doodle or? I can, I can send a doodle. Do you want me to send a doodle?
Is your friend?
Yes, yep, so.
Yeah, let's do that.
Let's do that, okay, so I will, I will talk to that.
I may be gone all of October. I'm putting it out there early?
Alright. Well, the library's gonna be closed post of October, so that's okay.
It's reopening, which bugs me out, but.
Um.
I I don't know a hundred percent. They sent one up there last weekend, but.
So the so here's the thing, last time I sent out a survey, um, there was no consensus in terms of anything.
It's not gonna be here September thirty-first, that's all I know.
You're not gonna be here September thirty-first?
Well, what's one thing, are we talking about a weekend? Two days, one day?
I think, I think we were gonna do one day.
One day.
Um.
One day, like six hours, five hours, four hours?
Yeah. And lunch. Um.
I don't wanna have to take a day off of work, I can avoid it.
So we're looking at a Sunday or a Monday?
Yes, Monday.
I'm happy to take a day off of work, um, if it's every other Monday.
Which Mondays are your payrolls in September?
Let's see, I did payroll this Monday, so we go two weeks out.
Okay, so hold on. This Monday was the seventeenth, so you do payroll on the thirty-first, the fourteenth, the twenty-eighth. The fourth is Labor Day, so we're not gonna do that. The eleventh, you're doing payroll. How, how are we feeling about September eighteenth? You're feeling great about it? Do you wanna spend your birthday with us? Sure, alright, Septem- Monday, September eighteenth.
This is gonna be at Rogers, hopefully?
Uh, I'm gonna see if we can do it at Rogers.
Or we can do it at my, on my.
On your porch, um.
It's still summer, by five days.
It's gonna be in the afternoon, you think?
In the after, um, six hours?
Well.
It's gonna be a long afternoon.
Can we do like ten to six, ten to four?
I'm not available that morning.
Uh.
September eighteenth.
Twelve to six? What, define morning? What if we do it in Riverhead? Are you traveling that morning?
Um, but um you know, there's a, there's a very good chance that both of those cases, you know, get kicked.
Okay. Do you wanna try, what about the Sunday, the seventeenth as an, I'm gonna send you guys options for Sunday, September seventeenth, and Monday, the eighteenth. And how about that? And then we'll settle on one of those, and then I'll see if Rogers is available, if Rogers isn't available. Um, maybe because it's the shoulder-ish season, we can find a place to.
I mean, September is.
Yeah.
Fantastic.
Is the following, that following Monday, the twenty-fifth, not good?
And has to run payroll.
Payroll, if we don't start until.
Every other week?
Yeah, every other week, I do payroll, and I have to get payroll, and people don't get paid, I don't get payroll.
Right.
By two, and they don't get me their stuff till noon, so I have a two-hour window where I have to. I try to get them to.
Get them a time clock.
It would be great if I could do billing from a time clock.
Listen, if if the eighteen works for everybody, I mean, I can get here, you know, you know, later, you know, but um, I'll probably like one, two.
Okay.
I don't want to, you know, belabor it.
I got the whole day, so.
Okay.
I'll bring desserts.
You'll bring dessert, okay.
Cheesecake.
Cheesecake.
No, birthday cakes.
What, what kind of birthday cakes do you like? The cheesecake?
Would you like individual cupcakes or like maybe donuts?
I'll give, I'll give locations.
Why would, why would, oh, you do Rogers because we're not going to be able to do here?
Yeah. So like if we can get Cooper Hall that day, like that's a nice space. Um, or I actually, I did a, a school board retreat at, um, the Preston House in the, the lower meeting room of the Preston House, which was actually quite nice. Um. Yeah. So, they'll find a spot. You can't go to churches?
No.
I'll, I'll, I'll scout some locations. Um, but if, you know, if it's, if you're going to be in central Isla.
No, don't worry about it.
Alright, because the other thing is, not that, that Vic doesn't mind traveling, but he's in Nassau County. So if we did something a little further. Wes, Vic, my, my, my pal, my buddy, who I went to library school with.
He's going to be doing the.
Yeah, he has a, he is retired, he has a consulting business where he actually does do some, some presentations and strategic planning. Um.
Okay, anything else, anybody or? Some new business?
I have one thing for new business and that is we landed on a date for our annual, um, AED and CPR training. So I just need you all to pass a motion that I can close the library.
I moved to close the library.
Wednesday, September thirteenth, um, just in the, in the morning.
Yes.
So. Okay.
Okay.
Aye.
Thank you.
Post. Motion passes. Okay, no period for public expression, because we don't have anybody, and no executive session. Oh, motion to adjourn. What a surprise. Second, all in favor? Okay.
Okay, hold on.
Done at seven, uh, six fifty, sir.